Welcome everyone to the regular zoning board meeting of Asbury Park. It is Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, and it is 7:01 PM. Mr. Avaloni, would you please call us to order?
I'd be happy to. The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, amended for 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press and the City of Asbury Park website. A copy of that notices on file with the Board Secretary as well. The notices on the conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the Guidelines for Virtual Meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Welcome to the zoning board meeting for May 11th, 2021.
Thank you, and I will now take role. Daniel Harris? Dan Harris, I see you.
You're there.
Yeah, I'm here. I don't hear you.
Thank you. Brittany Ashen?
Here.
Tim Selick?
Here.
Jill Potter is absent. Wendy Glassman?
Here.
Catherine Minervini is also absent. Bonnie Knut?
Here.
Russell Lewis?
Here.
And Christopher Avaloni?
Here.
Thank you very much.
So, from what I can see, we have no outstanding issues other than to take the application before us, which is 1121 Asbury Avenue. Nicole Graham and Scott Shedevy? I'll take a shot of pronouncing that. So, but before we get started, we have one recusal.
Yes, I'm recusing myself to Wendy Glassman.
So, Irene, can you put Wendy into the public arena?
Wendy, you can actually... Yes, actually, let me, let me see if I can just do it. And if it doesn't work, then we'll just ask you to mute yourself. All right, here we go. Actually, you know what? If I remove you, I think it's going to kick you out, Wendy. So I'll just ask you to mute yourself for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay, so...
Sorry. Not yet.
So let's get started with 1121 Asbury Avenue. Mr. Tropoli, it's your show.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Tropoli, if I may, I've reviewed the notices after they've been publication and alike, and they're all in proper form. So we have jurisdiction to proceed this evening with this application.
Thank you, Jack. I appreciate that. And back to you, Mr. Tropoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Board professionals. My name is Ronald Tropoli. Tonight I have the privilege of representing Nicole Graham and Scott Shedevy. They are the owners of 1121 Asbury Avenue, Asbury Park. And as you know, the home is located within the R1 Single Family Residential Zone. Mr. Serpico has given us jurisdiction and accepted proof of service, which I thank him for. So, in a summary fashion, the project consists of renovating an existing undersized one and a half story, single-family home by essentially removing all of the improvements from the first floor, leaving the first floor, but from the first floor up, removing and adding a full second story within the existing building footprint. An additional improvement would be the installation of a deck within the rear yard. The site is bordered by two similar two-story dwellings on adjacent lots that are similar in size and similar in height to what is proposed by the applicant. Many longstanding members of the Board may recall that this site was the former location of Jim's Hand Car Wash, which was a commercial car washing and detailing business that was located within the garage located on the site. My clients have advised me that the garage will be utilized only for storage and personal vehicles, and it's not part of this particular application. And as the Board well knows, Asbury Avenue is a gateway street for the city. We submit that the proposed improvements at the conclusion of our testimony tonight will be revealed to be aesthetic, that will enhance the streetscape while keeping a traditional look in that particular part of town. It's a significant upgrade for the site and surrounding area, and I believe it's consistent with the objectives of the master plan. But I'll leave that to the planner who will be testifying a little bit later. It will enhance the neighborhood and meet with the spirit of the community design regulations by renovating an existing home in a style consistent with other homes in the area. Mr. Higgins is here tonight as our planner. He will obviously wrap up the testimony. But briefly, the variances that are required would be for the front yard setback, which is an existing condition, but primarily it's the side yard setback along the western side of the home where 1.8 feet exists. And I believe your ordinance does permit for pre-existing non-conformities, a minimum three feet on that side. So we're a little shy on that, and also for maximum building coverage, whereas 25% is required, 23.6% exists, and 28.12% is proposed. I am very aware that this site was previously before the Board in December of 2019. We've reviewed the minutes. At that point in time was a different applicant. I believe it was a developer. This plan obviously has been modified, and I think in large part based on comments that were made by the, by the Board members. There is no second-story cantilever involved in this particular application. You will find with testimony from our architect, Mr. William Severino, that there's been a fair amount of removal of impervious surface on the site as part of this application. And you should know also that the, that the present homeowners live there. They want to upgrade the structure. They're excited about being in Asbury Park, and I'm happy to say that I'm pleased to represent them. So tonight, and I hope they're on somewhere, we have Nicole Graham and Scott Shedevy, who are the applicants. We have Mr. William Severino, who will be testifying on his Single Family Residence Architectural Plan. And we have Mr. Jim Higgins of Higgins Planning, who will wrap up with the required proofs necessary, demonstrating the positive and negative criteria, which have been satisfied, we believe, by the application, which will permit the Board to hopefully rule affirmatively. So with that, Mr. Serpico, would you like to swear everyone in at this point? Or do you want to take it as we go?
Individually, and we'll also swear in Doug Cleland. He's our Board Engineer.
Very well.
One second, Mr. Tropoli, just a quick question.
Sure.
Since this was before the Board, almost a little over a year ago, was Mr. Severino the original architect on that particular application? Or is he a new architect for this particular?
No, he is the former and current architect.
That's what I thought.
Right. And again, I know many, many of you, I believe, and forgive me, Mr. Chair, I really didn't know the composition of the members then, but I'm sure many of you would recall that there were a couple of sticking points, and hopefully we've resolved it, but...
I think Mr. Severino would know that the biggest sticking point was the, the bump out that was on the second floor that really unfortunately caused the rejection of the original application.
Absolutely, and I noted that. And I can assure the Board that should the Board look favorably upon this application, there would be absolutely zero bump out at the rear. And you'll see as we move forward with the plans. With that, Mr. Chair, I would be ready to present my witnesses subject to... Who's your first?
Please do.
Thank you. Basically, the applicants are here, Nicole Graham and Scott Shedevy. Both could be sworn, but I believe Nicole would be doing the bulk of the brief testimony as the applicant.
Do you want to proceed with her first?
Yes, please, Mr. Severino.
Nicole, please unmute yourself. Thank you.
Did it work?
Please raise your right hand.
Okay.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you can lower your right hand and just state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your current address, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Serpico. Good evening, Nicole.
Hi.
Hi. Nicole, I know you're pleased to be here tonight, but can you please just very briefly advise the Board why you decided to move to Asbury Park and purchase this home in this location, if you would?
Yeah, so our story is, is that we have been looking for a house for over 10 years. We looked in New York and Connecticut, but we kept coming back to Asbury. My husband grew up in Middletown and Little Silver. So we've been having fun, like, looking at his old haunts and reminiscing. And everyone in Asbury seems to be so nice to us. Like, they actually say hi when we're walking down the street, which is different. And our neighbors are amazing. We bought the house a little over a year ago, and we decided to make it our dream home. Neither of us have bought property before, or like houses before, so this is totally new to us. This whole experience is new. But we're artists, and we want to put our stamp on it. So with the help of Bill, our architect, we think we created something really beautiful that will fit in with Asbury, and we hope you think so too.
Thank you, Nicole. You presently reside in the, in the property at the house, correct?
Yeah.
Would it be fair to say that the home at this point in time is undersized by today's standards?
Yeah, I think it's like 800 square feet on the main level.
Okay. And it needs repair to some degree, correct? All houses do. So, what, in terms of the, just a general description of what's there now, how many bedrooms are in this particular home now?
Two.
And bathroom?
One bathroom. No, two real bedrooms and one bathroom.
Okay, so it's a two-bedroom, one-bathroom property. And with regard to what you are planning, and again, Mr. Severino will go through his, his drawings in a bit. How many bedrooms are you planning, assuming the Board looks favorably on the second-story addition?
So three bedrooms and then an office, because I work from home.
Okay, and how many bathrooms?
Three.
Okay, a master bath and two full baths?
Yes, it is a dream home.
And it's your plan to live there. In other words, obviously, you're not, this is not a spec home. You're not flipping it, you're not selling it. This is your, I think you said your forever home, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's talk just for a moment briefly about the garage. How do you plan to use the garage? Again, it was a commercial type use in the past, but how are you intending to use it?
For our cars and storage.
Okay, and it's really not part of this application, correct?
No.
Okay. You had, or your husband Scott, I believe, or yourself, had taken photographs of the existing property?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, with your permission, can we share a few of them?
Please.
Okay, Nicole, can you do a screen share on the photographs? And just pull them up if you can. And then before we discuss them, I'm going to ask for a foundation so we know who took them and when, more or less.
Okay. You'll see in the pictures, they have skeletons in the photos. Around Halloween last year. Here we go. Let me know when you can see it.
Yes, I think we can all see it. So, Nicole, okay, this is a, looks like a series of photographs that's marked 1121 Asbury Avenue, Asbury Park, and your name and your husband's name. Who actually took these photographs?
My husband, Scott.
Okay, and would it be fair to say that this is a true depiction of the way your home looked? I believe you said around Halloween of last year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Looking at the left front photograph, this is the front elevation of the property?
Yep.
And if you could just scroll through the photographs, and the one next to it shows left side?
Yeah, so this is a view from the back of the house, looking towards the front, where you see this fence, is the white fence on the left, on the left photo. If that makes sense. So our house is on the left, neighbor's house on the right.
But, right, just in terms of orienting, when you refer to the left side, this actually is the, let's say, the western part. This is the area where the variance is required, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And looking down what looks like an alleyway, you're referring, I believe, to a fence that's a six-foot fence, I believe, that apparently straddles the two properties, yourselves and the property immediately adjacent to the west, correct?
Yep.
And, and then again, we'll talk about this a little bit later, but it's your intention to retain or at least replace that fence, correct?
Yes.
And you understand, do you not, that if the Board looks favorably upon this application, that they would have to either grant a variance or an exception, depending on the stat, on the ordinance, to have that fence there, correct?
Yes.
And you also understand that the Board can't grant approval on neighbors' properties? So you would have to either seek an easement or probably more preferably, a, an agreement between yourself and the neighbor that would be subject to Mr. Serpico's and perhaps the Board Planner's approval. You understand that?
Yes.
Mr. Tropoli, who erected that fence? The original owner?
We're not sure.
Yeah, it was there when you purchased, correct?
Yes.
And maybe when we talk to Mr. Severino, he can perhaps indicate if it was there at the time, the last time it was hurt. I don't know.
Because it not only straddles both properties, it's also six feet high, which is not permitted in the front of a house.
Right, the maximum being four feet, Mr. Chair?
That's correct.
I believe. I think the, and again, if I just may, just digress for a moment. I think the, the concern that Nicole has is screening it so that individuals don't walk down there and maybe just to screen that area for storage. I don't know if the Board would consider a six-foot-high fence there, but certainly the applicant would be looking, again, assuming that the Board looks favorably on this for some kind of relief for a fence in that location.
Well, couldn't you put a six-foot fence just back to the front of the building? And that would be, you don't have to come all the way out to the porch. I'm sorry, this is Russell Lewis. Couldn't, could you not propose a six-foot fence pushed back to the face of the building and not to the porch? Is it, because it is, it's at the, it's at the porch level, correct?
It appears to be, Mr. Lewis.
But it's also straddling the neighbor's yard. So we cannot provide an approval for the fence because it would have to have an agreement with the neighbor. So, you know, that we could not even give you the approval now for that.
Yeah.
The only thing, Mr. Chair, that I would ask the Board to consider, again, this is not a deal breaker, but if, in the event that the Board looks favorably on this application, to give us, say, as a condition of approval, say, I don't know, 45 days after memorialization of a resolution, that we either work out an agreement with the neighbor for an appropriate fence in an appropriate location, or we don't have a fence in that location. And I'll defer to you, Mr. Serpico and Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I guess all I could say at this point is we'll see how we proceed, Mr. Tropoli. I, you know, personally, I don't think that's an appropriate place to have a fence.
As Mr. Lewis had indicated, again, I just wanted to point out that the applicant, and I don't want to get, I'm happy to talk about the fence, but it's not a deal breaker. If there is a way to somehow screen that alleyway, that would be my client's preference, but again, not a deal breaker.
I understand. Well, let's proceed, and we'll take that up at another point.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nicole, can you roll the next set of photographs up?
Sure.
Okay, and again, what we're looking at on the left side, is this the, the left side being your, your present single-family home, pardon me, single-story home and the residence to the right, correct?
Yes.
Okay, this is that alleyway again, also correct?
Yes.
And again, the picture?
Oh, no.
What happened?
Ron was frozen.
Oh, wait, he may be back.
He's back.
Johnny, you back?
I'm, yeah, I'm here.
Okay, good.
I'm here, I'm, I'm here. Okay, I didn't go anywhere. Can you, Nicole, keep scrolling up on the photographs? Okay, and this is, would this, would it be fair to say that this is the opposite side or the east side elevation?
Yes.
That shows a dormer and essentially a half-story. So it's really like a one and a half story at this point, correct?
Yeah, the finished attic.
Okay, and there is, and again, just in a layman's terms, there is a bit of a soil, a planting area on the side there on the eastern side, correct?
Yes.
And Mr. Severino will testify that that is to be expanded, correct?
Yes.
And also, to the right of that is a, is a shot into the yard, correct?
Yes.
And that's the existing garage, is that also correct?
Yes.
All right, and if you can just continue scrolling through your photographs, please? Okay, can you describe the view on the right side photograph?
So this is the back of the house.
Okay, and on the left side?
And left side is the right of the garage.
Briefly going back to the right side, there is a...
I'm sorry, we lost Ron again.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I get on, I'm hardwired, plugged in, which I can't imagine, but that's the vagaries of Zoom. Getting back to that, I'll repeat my question or my comment. You're planning a deck, correct?
Yes.
And the deck is in the area of what appears to me to be impervious concrete surface, correct?
Yes.
My understanding and speaking with you, that if the Board were to look favorably on the installation of a deck, that that impervious surface...
Jack, we're losing Mr. Tropoli.
Frozen again.
Yeah. When you're, we didn't get your comment about the impervious surface.
Right, I'm sorry about that, Chair and members of the Board. The impervious surface that would be underneath the deck would be removed, is that correct?
Yes.
And what would be placed there?
Stone or little rocks or whatever will let water come through.
And if the Board Engineer had a specific recommendation, you would agree to comply with that, correct?
Of course, yes.
Okay. And can you move, move forward?
Can I ask a quick question? Is, is that two back doors or?
Yes, yes, we have two back doors. Why not?
Okay.
All right. May I continue, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Thank you. And can you just continue scrolling up, please? This is just another shot on the, on the back left, is that correct?
Yes.
And then on the, there's also some concrete that goes, extends around the garage. And if you can just continue scrolling? And there, this is a picture of your garage from the back left, from the house, correct? Looking into the property.
Yep.
Okay. And where you have a patio set, I believe, and maybe there's another shot. There's a, there's a bit of asphalt in the back, actually, in the grassy area, is that right?
Yes.
Right, can you see if there's a screenshot of that as well? I believe there was one. Yeah, there's a, thank you, Nicole. There's a garage door that shows the, that looks like there's some kind of impervious surface there. Is that scheduled to be removed, assuming the Board looks favorably and replanted with grass?
Yes, we're, we're planning on that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. You can go back to your normal screen then. You know, just stop screen sharing.
And Mr. Tropoli, if I may, in, in, those photos will be marked into evidence as Exhibit A1.
Thank you, I was going to request that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. So Nicole, other than that, you plan to live there, you're going to beautify the property, and if the Board looked favorably on it, we can revisit the fence at a later time, hopefully tonight. And that's pretty much it. And if the Board were to look favorably on the fence, let's say, you would be responsible for the maintenance. But again, I don't want to get too terribly involved with that now, correct?
Yes.
That's all I have of the witness, Mr. Chair.
I appreciate that, Mr. Tropoli. I have no questions for Ms. Graham. Does anybody on the Board have any questions for Ms. Graham?
I do. This is Brittany Ashen. Just a question, so you're, the existing concrete, is that what that is, you said? The driveway and then?
Yes, ma'am.
So you don't plan to remove any of that?
No, we do. We are.
Looks like on the drawing, which I know the architect's going to come, but it looks like the deck and the rear, is that going to be concrete that it leads down to? So that would be to the west of the garage?
So the concrete in front of the garage is going to stay, but then the concrete that's going to go below the deck is going to be gone. And then the cement slab that's next to the garage is going to stay.
Right. Okay. Is there any reason why you want that to be concrete and not grass?
We wanted a little patio area instead of putting pavers down.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. Anybody else for Ms. Graham? All right. Board professionals, oh, I guess Donna's not here, but that, that leaves you, Doug. Do you have any questions for Ms. Graham?
No questions for me at this time.
Okay.
Chris, actually, I have one more question, sorry. Can you elaborate a little bit more on your home office?
The one that I want to have? Or the one that's here?
The one that you want to have?
It's going to be on the first floor. And Bill gave me some closet space in there too. So you could use it as a fourth bedroom if you wanted, but I need it for an office space.
And what exactly would, does that entail, Ms. Graham, when you say office space? What will you be?
Sorry. A desk, computer, two monitors, keyboards, tablets, printers, maybe like a daybed so I can take a nap during the day.
I guess what I'm getting at is you're not having clients come over?
Oh, no, I don't have, no, I don't have clients.
So this is, when you say a home office, it's basically you working at your computer? Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Because we, we have to be very specific in the use of the word office.
Oh, okay.
Do you understand, Mr. Tropoli?
Oh, absolutely. And there will be no signage of any sort, public is not invited in to your home office or anything of that nature. Would that be fair to say, Nicole?
No one's invited, no.
And you're not going to be having people come over that you will be meeting with to discuss anything regarding your business?
No.
So strictly just working on, on your computer by yourself?
Yes, I work for an ad agency. I'm an art director there. So no Pfizer clients are coming to the house or anything like that.
Okay. All right. So I guess we have to open it up to the public, Mr. Serpico, is that correct?
Yes, for cross-examination.
All right. Irene, do we have anybody in the public for Ms. Graham?
I do not show any hands raised. One just went up. And it's a phone caller ending in 350. I think that's Mr. McNolay. Mr. McNolay, go ahead and ask your question.
Yes, to identify himself first.
Yeah, hi, Ernest McNolay, former resident at the Fort Lauderdale Drive. I live at 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. I rent property on, at 813, first day of... eight at eight thirteen First Avenue in Asbury and in West Long Branch. So I'd like to ask some questions if Mr. Serpico would allow me.
Of course.
Oh, good. So ma'am, or actually, this question, I guess, is for the owner and and the lawyer. This was Jim's car wash for many years. And of course, Jim did a lot of stuff there with cars. And not always sure that everything was EPA approved, but the point is, once you bought it, I think last year, and you and you want to expand and like put a second floor and do things in the backyard, etc. The the use of the garage, I mean, does it? I mean, do you plan to have the ground and the garage checked out for anything that an auto service business used to do there for many years or or that's not necessary?
Excuse me, Mr. McNolley, that's an irrelevant question to the testimony.
Okay, okay, all right. So your your plan of use for the garage is?
A garage.
Storage.
To have my cars in there in storage.
Cars in storage. You mean your your personal stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And two back doors is 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 one of them for the office?
It's to a bedroom. It could have been their office. I don't know. But it's it's we're using it as a bedroom.
Is that the bedroom quasi office that you're going to use?
Yes, it's similar to in space. Yeah.
Okay, okay. So it's almost like a continuing use of what the previous. But that's why there's two back doors. One is into the home and one is into that.
Do you understand the question? Ms. Graham, do you understand the question? Is that the bedroom or is that the office that door?
Right now, it's a bedroom.
What is it going to be?
It'll be a office.
Okay.
With new plans.
Okay, good. I get it. I want to make sure you understood the question. Go ahead.
Okay. And I think that was Jim's car wash's office, correct?
I don't know. I've never been there. I was.
Well, I think, okay. Okay. When when you closed on the property, what was it a R1?
That's irrelevant.
Okay, it's irrelevant. And I want to ask.
Zone current.
Okay, it's irrelevant. And I want to ask. I just was wondering how we go from a commercial property to a R1.
It's an R1 zone. It's it's been an R1 zone for some time.
Okay. Well, with the car wash there, with a business?
Guess so.
You guess so?
Yeah, if there was a car wash there and it was an R1 zone, the answer is yes.
Well, that was a business, a commercial business. So the question is, you know, I don't think there's any indication that this owner or owners are going to continue any kind of commercial business there like that. She stated that an office for self-use, no customers. Okay, okay, okay. We're clear. I just I just wondered how we got from a commercial office to a private office without any application.
The new owners are using it for a permitted use.
I heard that, but how did it go?
It doesn't matter.
How did it go? It doesn't matter. That's an irrelevant question. Okay.
Irrelevant question way beyond the scope of her testimony.
Okay. Maybe I'll ask the next the architect or I guess the planner or whatever. So the other question, the other question I had.
Commercial to residential is irrelevant.
Okay, okay.
So Mr. McNolley, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I do. Why? Is it okay that I ask?
Ask your question.
Okay, the six-foot fence between the two homes. Is that staying or are you taking that down?
We're going to find out what we have to do. I don't know exactly what we need to do with that fence. I would like to redo it. It doesn't really work aesthetically with what we're planning. But the board will let me know what the rules are.
Okay, and you're aware that it's on two properties, right? Yours and the neighbors?
Yeah, we're friendly. We'll we'll make sure.
I don't mean you're not friendly. I don't mean you're not friendly. I just mean you're aware that it's on two properties.
Yeah.
And yet it was it was constructed by your previous owner.
I don't know who constructed it, actually.
I think it was put up for security for the car wash. So but anyway, I think you know that a six-foot fence needs a I don't know what it's called, a zoning approval, right?
I heard that.
Yeah, a solid six-foot fence on the front on two properties is going to need some kind of revision or approval. But I understand where you're coming from. You don't you don't plan on using it like the car wash, but it is there.
Mr. McNolley, can you please ask a question?
Okay. So you do understand that you're going to have to fit that into your application and be specific about what the plan is with the fence, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you're not prepared to do that tonight, are you?
I need to find out what they say. I don't know what they're going to say about it. We haven't gotten there yet.
Oh, you mean the owners or the board?
The board.
Okay, I get it. So, okay. And relative to all the cement there, I mean, that was commercial driveway cement put in for the car wash, etc., etc. But you you plan somehow to to not keep the the double driveway in the front of the property? You're going to kind of narrow it to make more grass and then in the back, remove a lot of it and make a patio and stone? Is that what you said?
Yeah, that's exactly what we're planning on doing because we don't need that huge driveway.
I'm aware. Yeah, I know. You're not. You're not running a car wash here. And I think it sounds like it sounds like I think if you are correct in what you said, that you're going to be replacing the impervious cement with pervious, whatever, grass or stone or something, correct?
Right.
Okay, and then the patio would, of course, that would fit in with that. It could be on the stones or something pervious as opposed to all that cement, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think that. Okay. So so you're you're adding a second floor and you're adding a patio in the back. The second floor, I I I know you know the neighbors are two two stories. And you're a one-story and you're going to be a two-story.
What's the question?
And the question is, when you put the two-story on, you you know that you're going to be changing your neighbors, I guess, views and and breeze and and etc. And I guess you're aware of that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I think you're also aware that if the neighbors had an issue with that, they could come to this meeting. I think you know that, right?
Oh, yeah, I know.
And they were and they were notified, probably within 200 feet. So you know that also, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. McNolley. I don't show any other hands raised, Mr. Avaloni.
Thank you, Irene. Mr. Tropoli, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For my next witness, I'll ask that William Severino come on and be sworn by the board attorney with your permission.
Marina, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and your affiliation with the applicant.
William G. Severino. Last name is S E V E R I N O. Address is 104 Summit Circle, Little Ferry, New Jersey. I am the architect for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Severino. Would you kindly give the board the benefit of your professional education qualifications and so forth, which are in your architecture field, please?
I've been a registered architect in New Jersey since 1996.
Registered. Time out, time out. Mr. Severino has testified before this board in the capacity as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. Are you still currently a licensed architect in the state of?
Yes, I am.
And you were the the architect in the previous application, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, there's no reason to voir dire this witness.
I agree 100%. We accept your credentials, Mr. Severino. Welcome back. My first question to you right off the bat is, your plans look very similar to me. There are they basically similar to the ones that you presented the last time?
The the plans are different in the way that all of the interior components are new to this applicant and to this application. A little, I mean, we're starting from the same base, so there's going to be similar similar volume that was created in the prior application. As in this one, I was trying to stay with the vernacular of the street, to stay with the streetscape down Asbury Avenue, to keep in context. And I thought that that was a good design solution for the prior application. I still think it's a good design solution for this application.
Please proceed.
Thank you.
Okay, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If you prefer. What would you like?
Right. Mr. Severino, why don't we go directly to your preparation, your site plan? Let's have that marked as A2. If we may, Irene. I believe the board has received copies. It's a five-page document. Mr. Severino, as it's being marked, could you identify for the record what it is that we're looking at, single-family residence, residential addition, composed of five pages?
Yes. Am I sharing now or what am I doing here?
Yes, please go ahead.
You're identifying and then sharing.
All right. So we have T1, which is the site plan zoning data sheet.
Right. Let's hold on to that that screenshot for a moment. And again, for the record, may I call you Bill for rather than Mr. Severino?
Yeah, please do.
Thanks, Bill. For the record, these plans were prepared by you, correct?
Yes, they are.
They're dated August 14, 2020, which is after the initial hearing of this matter before this board, correct?
These drawings are new to this application, yes.
Very good. I think it's important to take a good look if you can blow up the site diagram area, if you would, which I think would give the board a better perspective of what it is that would be removed and what the landscaping area would be. So as we have, Bill, if we could, after you do this, I just want to go back to your photograph in the upper left-hand corner. But for now, the site diagram, existing conditions, I believe you indicated was a one and a half story frame dwelling, and the plan is to completely remove that and and construct a second floor on the subject home, correct?
Yes, the first floor shell is to remain. The second floor is to be removed and rebuilt to be a full second story.
And the
And the deck is to be built to the rear.
And this will be within the existing footprint. Of course, it requires a variance, but it'll be within the existing footprint. No cantilevers involved in this particular application, correct?
None. Strictly over the existing footprint.
Thank you. I noted in reviewing the notes from the earlier application, vis a vis this application, that there's a fair amount of impervious surface being removed. Can you lead the board through those changes, if you would, please, starting with the landscape area on the side, the eastern side of the dwelling?
Sure. If you could follow my cursor, I don't know if you can see that or not.
We can.
Oh, wonderful. This dotted line here is the line of the existing asphalt. There's a small, small planting strip along the existing side of the building. The asphalt that is currently here or paving that is currently here is all going to be removed and and go back to being landscaped area. There was a an area here that was an asphalt pad that is or was going to be removed, and that goes back to grass as well. All the area that's under the deck, for calculation purposes, decks are typically considered as part of impervious, but all the area beneath the deck is going to go back to being, you know, something that's gravel or dirt or whatever would be found to be, you know, good to put under the deck, you know, could be left as a non-impervious surface. So we are picking up a good amount where drainage can go through, you know, greater than what we have currently. And and a little bit more to the front because we are pushing the stair over, but I can't say that that's a net gain. It's just pushing it over.
Okay. With regard to the photograph, if you would just scroll down and go back to the upper left-hand corner?
Yes.
And and I know you've done a site visit, obviously. Does that depict a home in its present condition?
That photograph was actually taken in February of 2019.
Okay.
And that was with the prior applicant. When I took this, it just was a good shot to use for the front, and that fence was there at that time.
All right. With regard to the the actual structure itself, the present structure, from an architectural standpoint, would you consider that to be for the lack of a better term, an undersized home, not up to contemporary standards?
Not by a long shot. No, it is subpar as far as contemporary standards are concerned.
What's the square footage of the home, if you know?
As shown on the front sheet there, the first floor is 816 square feet. The semi usable part of the second floor is 417 square feet under the sloped roofs, bringing us to a grand total over the two floors of 1,233 square feet.
Okay. And again, your opinion as an architect that that is, would it be fair to say woefully undersized?
Even in regards to what's left and right of it, it's woefully undersized.
Very well. The what I'd like to do, Mr. Chair, perhaps in a more or less summary fashion, is ask Mr. Severino to go go through his exhibits so that the board gets a feel for the floor plan, starting with the basement, the first floor plan, second floor plan. We could talk about the roof, and then we can look at the elevations, if we may be able to do that, Mr. Chair, in a summary fashion.
Please proceed.
Thank you. And Bill, if you would, again, in a summary fashion, can we move to sheet A101, please?
Yep, there we are.
And what does that depict, if you would, on the upper, pardon me, on the left-hand side?
So we have we have the proposed basement, then then the first floor, then the second floor.
Okay.
There we go. So what we're seeing in the basement, we're really not touching anything as far as the foundation is concerned. All of that area is already there. We will have to potentially augment the structure as we do the new work, but there's nothing really proposed there. We're just going to be used for utilities. Furnace, water heater, storage. That's really all we have down there. On the first floor going here, we're going to reorient the front door from what's currently shown. And in so moving over and having a new stair that would be centered on the front door. Going in, we'll have an entry closet, new stair that'll go to the second floor, large open plan for the living, dining, and kitchen area. In proceeding down the corridor to the to the rear, we'll have a bathroom. The opposite side will be the office that could be used as a guest room as well, sized for both. And the laundry room is to the rear corner. There out on the deck, there is an outdoor shower, stairs to the drive, stairs to the backyard. Going up the stairs on the second floor, at the top of the stair, another bath. Then the master bedroom with a closet and a master bath, and then towards the front of the house, two additional bedrooms, each with their own closets. So really creating three bedrooms, two baths on the second floor, the office and mudroom or laundry on the with the bath and the kitchen, living, dining on the first basement, as you see. Nothing going on.
And a quick question for you. So if you go back, that door in the rear on the first floor opens to a hallway to the living room, not to the office, correct?
Well, this door here, coming off the deck, is going down the corridor to the main part of the house. Yes. The doors that are currently on the rear of the house are not going to be there after the the work is done.
Okay, because it's a little confusing. Because I think the applicant said there was a door leading straight into the office from outside. That's not true.
There is currently, as we speak today, in the proposed floor plan, there will not be.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we move to the next sheet? If not, we'll go to sheet 102, Bill?
Certainly.
I have a question. Where's HVAC? Where are your mechanicals?
We are going to have mechanical units up in the attic that will serve the second floor. It is anticipated if a split system is needed at times to not run trunk lines up through the floor. It's advantageous to have a unit in the basement that serves the first and a unit in the attic that serves the second. That may be the case. I didn't go through specifically on on the scope of the mechanical systems yet, but that's kind of we're kind of set for that if need be. However, you know, the Uh, however, you know, the HVAC is shown in the attic currently, just basically a hatch that goes up there, a couple of lights so you, you know, kill yourself.
Don't you still need a compressor on the ground to make those operate properly? Outside?
And right there is where we're showing you, on the site.
On the, okay.
So you can see in the crux of the, uh, of the deck there, we're gonna put it right in the corner.
I do, I do see that, but it's not reflected on any of the other elevations or anything, so, okay, just, just to be clear, that's fine.
Thank you.
Um, once again, going back to the attic, simple attic plan, simple, uh, you know, gable roof, uh, in keeping with the neighborhood, nothing too, uh, too crazy.
And, uh, Bill, just a couple of, uh, comments on that or questions, observations? The attic is not livable space, correct? It would be for utility and storage use only?
That's all it's for.
And, uh, with regard to the height, uh, the proposed height of the building, uh, upon completion, would it be conforming to the zone requirements?
We are below the allowable limit, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, let's move on to the elevations on A two oh one, if we could. And, and again, in a summary fashion, can we start in the upper left-hand corner with the front elevation and a, a basic description of what we're looking at, please?
So basically with the front elevation, we'll have a stone base, um, going up new stairs centered on the front door, a little bit of a gable over the door to pronounce the entry. The, the living room windows here with a little transom over them to give, uh, you know, additional light into the interior. We have this nice area porch that is now on the driveway side for the, the majority of it, uh, which will be nice. You could probably sit out there and put a table. The upper bedrooms you see here in the, in the, on the second floor, and, uh, the gable end with, uh, with the decorative louver and, and cedar siding.
Where will you, Mr. Severino, where will you, um, take the stormwater to?
Uh, well, we could run it down the splash blocks, we could run it out to, to daylight, we could run it over the lawn, whichever is preferable. So, and we have the larger landscaping area in that side too, so you know, we'll use some of that to water, water whatever we have there.
I, I, I'll defer to our board engineer to give you a best answer to that.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, um, the east side elevation?
Side elevation, simply, uh, roofing siding, windows as required, uh, you know, we're looking at, um, the shower back here, the small roof that'll kind of cover it over as required, and then you'll see the deck with the stairs that go down to, uh, to the driveway and to the backyard. Rear elevation, once again, the, uh, pretty reflective of what's going on in the front. These are the master bedroom windows, master bathroom. This is the lower office, um, or guest room. That's the mudroom window. Uh, this is the door that goes out that you saw at the end of the corridor. Uh, here's the outdoor shower, once again, under the roof, and, uh, these are the stairs that go down to, to the yard and to the driveway. Uh, because of our proximity to the side yard, it is not permitted to have windows on the west side elevation, being that we're less than three feet from the property line. As such, the windows were removed from that elevation, uh, which is why it looks pretty blank. But, um, you know, you see everything go down. It's, it's basically the flip side. The, the door to the basement, that Bilco door and the platform will remain, however, uh, from the existing rear elevation, that the other two sets of stairs, the other two rear doors obviously will be removed. And they'll go out.
What is the material for the deck?
Uh, it's gonna be composite.
Composite.
Whether, whether it's a Trex or, uh, you know, TimberTech, uh, is to be determined.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Severino, if we can complete your plan set, uh, with a review of A two oh two?
Certainly. And that wasn't it. Let's see where I am.
Uh-oh.
There we go. That's better. So you can see that, I assume?
No.
What can you see?
You.
That's not good. Hang on. See what happened here. Nobody wants to see me, trust me. Come on. Better?
I get it.
There we are.
Yes, there you go.
Oh, we got it. Okay.
So, um, Bill, if you could just bring that up a bit, and then what I'm gonna ask you to do in a narrative fashion is start in the upper left-hand corner, uh, and then working down that column, and again, uh, just a basic description, and then point out the significance of the time and date of these photos and the simulations to the right, if you would, please?
Yes, um, what we have here is the, the front of the house as it exists, and, uh, the 3D image is the, the front as proposed. So we're basically trying to grab that from the same spot. I'm trying to get this a little bit bigger, I apologize. Hold on for just a moment. Okay. Um, so you can see there, this is basically the same house that's there currently, and, and you can see we're sitting there. I did not do the one to this side. I just wanted to show this relationship between the two. Um, that's generally the scope and the volume that we have there. Uh, same thing going on for this side. So you can see the house as exists from the back corner and, and what we're proposing with the deck and with the, the outdoor shower and everything else. And this, uh, bottom picture, and, and this is showing from the rear yard towards the rear of the existing and the adjacent property. I took the photo at this time and, and date, February twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, eleven forty-five. Uh, in putting this together through SketchUp, you are able to orient the house and select the time and date that you cast the shadow. And, and you could be really specific. You could dial it in like exactly to match. So I did dial it in exactly to match, and as you can see, the shadow pattern here is similar to the shadow pattern in what came out of, of the SketchUp program. Like, I didn't draw that. That, that basically is the shadow as cast. And in doing so, you can see that, uh, at eleven forty-five AM in February, um, that's the shadow that is cast on the adjacent house. So, so there is beyond the roof, light coming into that second floor window, and, and that's generally what we're, we're hoping to look like, uh, you know, at the rear elevation, front elevation and side elevation for the home.
Thank you, Bill. You can, uh, just stop the screen sharing. I have a few more questions I'd like to ask, uh, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Thank you. Um, Bill, you've had an opportunity to look at the board planner's memo, memorandum dated May sixth, twenty twenty-one, correct?
Yes, I did.
Um, you know, I'd like to just skip over some of the, uh, the neighborhood context and things of that nature. Move to, um, page three of A, Building Site Design. Um, there's a comment by the board planner with regard to the community design regulations, and I, I just simply want to ask you, do you believe that the design that is proposed here fits the intent and purpose of the community design regulations?
Uh, I believe it does. You know, we, we, it is, it does look residential, so yes.
Does it fit within the neighborhood?
I believe it does, yes.
The design is similar to surrounding homes on, in that particular neighborhood, correct?
Uh, we, we strove to be contextual, so yes.
And drainage, I believe, um, we had talked about under, uh, page five of A, um, the recommendation would be that roof drainage be directed away from the adjoining property to the west, and either be collected for reuse and recharge in the planning better lawn area. Do you see that as a probability?
Yeah, we could certainly do that, yes.
And, and whatever suggestions the board engineer would have, um, could be implemented by the applicant, I presume, correct?
Yes.
And again, one last thing, and again, I, I know we've kicked around the fence probably more than we should have, um, but, um, from an architectural standpoint, do you have any comments on whether or not a fence should actually be in that location, which would be straddling the two homes, again, understanding that the board can't grant relief on somebody else's property?
Uh, strictly architecturally, I believe that if it was set back to the line of the houses and not to the front of the porches, it would be a lot less obtrusive, a, a lot less, uh, visual, and it would probably serve both property owners better. Uh, if it was simply pushed back, I, I would anticipate that neither would want to have that alleyway exposed to the street, uh, being that it's narrow and, and a great place to, you know, throw garbage, but, um, you know, I, I could see that, that the fence be pushed back to the house line.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's, um, all I have of this witness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tropoli. Thank you, Mr. Severino.
Thank you.
Um, I don't have any further questions for Mr. Severino. Does, uh, does anybody on the board have any questions for Mr. Severino?
I, I do. Um, two, two quick questions. Yeah, I know you said the left side or the, the west side is not gonna have windows. So the front room is a bedroom, so it'll have a window obviously out front. What was directly across from that? Was that a bathroom? Down on the other, the rear part, portion of that?
Yeah, we are on the, uh, on that side specifically?
Yeah, well, that one side has no windows.
Right.
So I'm sorry, I don't have the plans in front of me.
So with the plan, where we have a closet towards the front at the, at the front-
That's a, that's a bedroom in the front that has a window in the front.
Oh, we're talking second floor, then?
Right. And then, right, so the, what's in the rear of the house on the second floor on the northwest side? Is that a bathroom?
Yes.
So there's a window out the rear?
Yes.
Okay, and then my second question was about the shadow. So you showed how the garage cast that shadow, and it's really not showing us what kind of shadow the second floor is gonna throw off.
Well, it, it's shown on the adjacent house, as you're looking through-
There's no second floor there, so you can't create a shadow of something that's not there.
Absolutely, you're right, I can't.
Right, okay, so we don't know what kind of-
But the image that's shown on A two oh two, that depiction with that second floor drawn in and the orientation of the house and the way the, the program can calculate the sun angle gives a relative depiction of where that shadow would be on the adjacent home.
Okay, so it's the, it's the computer program that's saying there's really not gonna be a shadow cast at that time?
It's a, it, the computer-generated image shows the shadow that's predicted at that time of day on that adjacent house.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I have a question for Donna, um, regarding that fence, Donna. Um, if it was set back-
Let's get Donna sworn.
Okay.
Donna, please raise your right hand. Some swear testimony about giving this matter be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
State your name for the record, spell it and give us your affiliation with the board.
Donna Miller, M.I.L.L.E.R. Uh, I'm a planner with Clark Caton Hints, and I am the board's, um, consulting planner.
Thank you.
So Donna, i- if they were, uh, to get approval, uh, for that fence where it is currently, uh, well, I guess, not that we would ever give that approval, but, um, if we were to, um, uh, if we pushed back the fence, does it have to be four feet if it was in line with the house, or can it be as high as six?
So, so the rule of thumb is there are no solid fences over four feet high permitted in a required front yard. So it would have to be twenty-five feet back from the street, the right-of-way line. That's not where the house is, because the house is closer than twenty-five feet. Um, but I'm not really sure I'm hearing a compelling reason for the difference between four feet and six feet. I keep looking at the pictures and you know, what are we really protecting here and the reasons for securing this area? I mean, we're talking about a two-foot wide space between two buildings. There is a door on one of the buildings, according to these photographs, but, uh, um, you know, um, as far as the subject property, which is the only thing we can really consider, you know, having a fence, um, in the front yard area, um, either, you know, in line with the front facade of the house, rather than the, the porch line. Um, you know, I'm not sure what benefit there is to six feet as opposed to four feet. You know, we've got eyes on the street, we've got friendly neighbors, we've got everybody looking out for each other. Who are we concerned about is throwing garbage in here? You know, which was the testimony provided. Um, and, uh, so, you know, again, Mr. Avalonia, I, I, I'm not sure the board has heard a good reason for a six-foot-high solid fence.
I, I, I would tend to agree with that, Donna. I, you know, I, I, I really don't see the necessity of, of, of putting a, a, a fence between the two homes?
And I did want to ask, uh, because again, it's hard to tell, uh, from the site photos exactly where, where are the utility meters uh, for the house? I, I'm not sure if Mr. Severino can answer that, or if, um, or if we have to jump back to, uh-
The applicant has just raised her hand. Nicole, can you answer, uh, the-
But hang on, so don't answer anything. Jack, I don't want to twist anything up for you, uh-
Oh, it's okay. If, if it's one question to ask where the meters are, I'm not gonna reopen that for cross-examination.
So that's why the fence is close to the porch, because the meters are right behind the fence.
So I don't understand. So you, how do you get to the meters?
There's a door.
In, a gate in the fence?
Yeah.
So then there is access through that, through the fence?
One question, I said one question. Now we're going down the primrose path. Let's, if we're gonna call this witness back, but-
No, I, I don't mean to question the witness. My, I'm speaking rhetorically that I don't see a reason if there's a gate in this fence that anybody can just walk through, because the meter guy doesn't have to ask permission to go, look, read your meter. I don't understand, you know, the security issue then that was also raised. Mr. Chair.
I appreciate that, uh, a- and I, I'm not quite sure what, what it offers either. Um, so I, 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 at this point, I, I'm not, I'm not in favor of the fence in, in any way, but we can proceed.
Um, I, I had finished with, uh, Mr. Severino, Mr. Chair.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Severino?
Yes, I do. Um, I wanted to go back to the deck and the reasoning for the long rectangular shape. I know that there's a seller out there, but, um, just what was your thinking with that layout?
Um, as far as the, uh, proportions of the deck, obviously we wanted to leave the door that goes down to the basement. That Bilco door is really the best way to get, best and only good way to get down there. Um, and we wanted to obviously clear the second door of the garage so that they could still utilize the garage, and, and the resulting space in between is, is that rectangle that we see.
And what is that dimension?
Uh, we have that as ten foot wide, and, um, the total would be about twenty-three feet deep.
That even wide enough to put a table in there?
I, I think it should be sufficient for a table.
Okay. Um, and the, the pavement's gonna be torn out and replaced with permeable pavement? Is that what was testified? I, I'm getting confused by that part.
So what we had, uh, looked at initially was to remove all the paving that's under the deck, and that would go back to, you know, pervious surface under the deck.
I'm following that. What about the driveway and to the west of the existing garage?
Uh, unless the applicant, uh, states otherwise, I believe that, that, that asphalt, concrete, whatever's there would remain at this time.
Okay, thank you. And the existing garage, is there any improvement to that?
Nothing planned at this time.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Anybody else have any further questions for Mr. Severino?
I'm speaking. Um, but anyone thought of a four-foot fence going down where the six-foot fence is or the gate, which would be a little, um, wouldn't be as caustic to your eyes in reference to that, a little more acceptable? With a four-foot fence going down the side?
Between the two homes?
Yeah.
Is that what we're referring to?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm sure that the, uh, I'm, I'm gonna speak for the applicant currently. I, I don't believe that, uh, they will have any trouble with changing the fence to do what it has to do to, uh, you know, meet the board's approval.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Um, anybody else for Mr. Severino? Anybody else for Mr. Severino? Okay. Board professionals. Do you have any questions for Mr. Severino? Was Doug?
Yeah.
I have a question, sir. Donna, if you want to go first?
I think Doug has to be sworn in, Jack.
I don't know if he's asking questions. He's going to testify.
Okay.
Yeah, I might, I might. So maybe we just get it over with. Jack?
Sorry?
Jack's frozen.
We're, we're all frozen.
I can hear him.
Okay, Doug, raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your affiliation with the board.
Douglas Cleland, C.L.E.L.L.A.N.D., with Insight Engineering, board engineer.
Okay, ask your questions.
So is it safe to say that the existing drainage patterns on the property will be maintained? Or in other words, is there's no real grading proposed here other than some removal of pavement?
That's, that's yes. That's, that's correct.
Okay. And it's, it's hard to tell without, you know, topography of the site, but, you know, based on what I have looked at, you know, in reviewing some of Google Earth imagery, does the site generally pitch out towards the street? Are, are you aware of that?
I, I think the garage is higher than the street, so I would say yes. That's my, my guesstimate on, on the elevations there.
And then it looks, looks like, you know, from what I can tell with where the roof leaders currently go, it looks like about half of the house currently drains to the existing driveway that's there. But is it, is it correct that that portion, that a portion of the driveway is going to be removed over there? And there's going to be a planting bed there now?
Yes, there's proposed larger planting bed than, than the, the small planting strip that's currently on that side of the house.
Okay. And the proposed roof leaders, are they going to discharge in the same location as they currently do?
Yes, that's what we have shown at this time.
Okay. So it looks like half of them will discharge to the proposed planting bed and, you know, ultimately spill out into the driveway. The other side of the house is where that, you know, the fenced-in alleyway kinda is. It's hard to tell what goes on back there from, from what I can see, but you know, do you know if that also pitches out towards the street?
I'm really not sure on, on that side. Really not sure.
The other question I had was in reviewing your plan, it seems like, I know that the building coverage is increasing, you're going up to 28.31. But from what I can tell, with the impervious coverage you are removing, is there a net reduction in impervious surface?
Let me check back to the T1 here. You know, we're constructing the deck over what had been asphalt prior. So in the larger planting bed and the removal of the asphalt behind the garage, in, in the reconfiguration of those planting areas, there is more pervious area and less paved-over area in this proposed application than what was there before. And, and that would even be greater if you were to consider, which I, I didn't for the point of calculation, that the area underneath the deck will now be, you know, back to something that the water can get through.
Okay. Yeah, and on that topic, the applicant had mentioned, my computer's making a funny noise, sorry. The applicant mentioned proposing gravel underneath the house, I mean, underneath the deck. You know, something that the board might want to consider, I know, I know they've done in the past. You know, being that that does count towards building coverage and the building coverage is non-compliant. You know, putting, say, like a 12-inch-deep gravel bed under the deck to allow, you know, water to infiltrate into the ground below. Is it true that the, the deckboards will be spaced so that rainwater can pass through?
Yes.
And one other thing to consider, I, I know that you mentioned there was a basement. You know, certainly wouldn't want to cause any problems down in the basement, so you know, perhaps starting that gravel bed say about 10 feet off of the house, you know, certainly wouldn't want to cause any water issues down in the basement.
I'll make a note of that effect.
Right, I'm sure the applicant would have no difficulty in agreeing with the board engineer's recommendations. We did discuss this prior in time. That would be, again, assuming the board looks favorably on it, would be subject to board engineer, a design subject to the board engineer's approval. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Tropoli.
One final question. Existing utilities are all going to be reused? Is that correct?
You know, we may upgrade the electrical, but I assume, yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Doug. Donna, do you have any questions for Mr. Severino?
Yes. Mr. Severino, can you actually share your screen again with the renderings? Those are kind of nice, and we didn't get those in our package, so I'd like to see those a little more.
These images?
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Um, cool, can we see that top?
Is that too small?
No, I, I can work with that. Okay. So, um, okay. So that's going to be like a contrasting color, okay. Uh, okay, so can you give us a little more detail? I, I expect that many of the choices in the design of the, for example, the cedar shakes in the, in the gable end, color of the siding were, were chosen by the applicant, the homeowners. The style of the windows. Can you tell us a little bit about your conversations with the owners about selecting some of those particular elements, because they're, you know, they're a little atypical. And, you know, particularly the change in, in the porch roof style, just so I get a little more rationale on our, hopefully, proof on the community design stuff.
No, we had, we had gone through a number of conversations as to what the design aesthetic was going to be as far as colors and materials and, and what was going to be around the porch. And in speaking to Nicole, she wanted something that looked, you know, very coastal and, and bright and, and, you know, was looking through numerous samples of siding before coming to something of, of this, of this nature.
I really appreciate the five-inch, you know, clamber. That's, we, we really hate the skinny stuff.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of in keeping with the whole look of, of a home of this style and, and trying to be, you know, once again, sensitive to this type of vernacular. And, you know, in, in doing so, you know, coming up with, you know, the forms and, and and features that you would have found and what is found in adjacent homes. So that was really kind of where we were, were coming to for that. And the reason for the transoms over the, the main double hungs is primarily just to get a lot of light into that, that first floor, to make it as, as open and, and as, you know, inviting as it possibly can be, especially in, in contrast to the amount of windows that go into that existing first floor now. It'll, it'll be a marked difference between, you know, that amount of light and this amount of light.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be a lot. I mean, you've got that southern exposure on that facade, so you will be bringing in a lot of light. Okay, and again, the, the porch roof is kind of a big difference from the other houses in the neighborhood. What, why did we stick the little gable on?
The small gable over the, the entry?
Yeah.
Just to pronounce the entry. It's just a little bit of a feature for curb appeal, just to, to bring some attention to that, that front door.
Okay, and is the, is the phapon, is that supposed to be a functional vent, or is it just decorative?
It's decorative.
Okay. Okay, and then the railings on the deck?
Yes.
I don't see a spec for that in the elevation drawings. Can you tell us what the deck railings are made of?
You know, we didn't really discuss it at length, but, you know, most likely a composite to match the decking material. You know, Trex offers a number of deck of railings, TimberTech offers a number of railings. It would most likely, you know, be in concert with that selected system.
Okay, so you're not going to necessarily match your shower enclosure style that you're showing?
No, 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 no. You know, we don't need to be that opaque on the deck rail. I prefer that amount of opacity on the, on the shower, though.
Okay, and then, again, in this rendering, the porch, the front porch doesn't have railings, but
It will. It will have a 36-inch rail. It was strictly done for, for a little bit of, you know, clarity and ease of rendering.
Okay, but it will be wooden, typical turned or, or square balis?
Yeah, we can do a square balis, straight wooden rail, yes.
And then will they be painted white to go with some of the trim, or are you going to go with the contrast with the cedar tone?
We haven't discussed that, but if, if we're going to, we could potentially do white or black or whichever.
Have an ask about that, so that's fine.
I haven't really gotten into that.
Okay, so then, so we've got the siding, we've got the shakes, we've got the vent, the window styles. And I'm just going to scroll to my other that's the basement door. And it's steps down. Okay. I think I think that's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. All right, I think we're at the point to open it up to the public for Mr. Severino. Irene, do we have anybody?
Thank you, Mr. Avaloni. I only have one hand raised. Mr. Magnoli, go ahead and ask your question of Mr. Severino.
I think I have to be sworn in, Donna.
No, I'm asking questions. It's not, it's not testimony.
Oh, okay. All right, Ernest Magnoli, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach, Florida, 813 First Street, Asbury, and Cedar Avenue, West Lone Branch. So I had a question on the house for the architect. So basically, there, there's dormers on the second floor now. Are those bedrooms?
On the existing second floor?
Well, yeah, I'm looking right at the picture.
Yes.
I'm looking at Jim's car wash, the house on the property with the garage. There's two dormers on the top and a front dormer, a west dormer, an east dormer, and I don't know, maybe there's a north dormer. But what are those rooms? Are they bedrooms?
Those areas on the interior are actually so substandard in size, it's very difficult to fit any sort of furniture in there. There are sloped ceilings, limited floor space. It's really not conducive to somebody living up there. It, it really is an attic that somebody had, had put sheet rock on the walls. And in our, in our application, that's all going to be removed anyway.
Okay, so what, what you're, what you're saying now architecturally, what you want to do and what you're changing from is those three dormers, maybe four, they're not like seven-foot ceilings and they're not, they were never used for anything as a home, like a bedroom or anything like that?
I cannot attest to how they were used prior to when I got involved with the project.
Okay, well, do, as an architect, do you have any idea what they're up there for?
No.
I mean, to me, it looks like there were, maybe a family lived there, and those were the kids' rooms.
I, I can't say. I didn't see any furniture. Every time I've seen the house, it's been empty up there.
Okay, so what you're saying is from the first floor, the, the, the roof drains, you're basically going to take off the whole top of the house and put on a new second floor, correct?
Yes.
So everything we're talking about, the dormers on the second floor, I guess the chimney, everything that's there now, you're going to remove all of that and put a nice new second floor, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and it'll have no similarity to the, to the second floor now?
That's correct.
Okay. Will, will you be, in your architectural plan, will you be redoing the outside of the house, like the, like some of its concrete walls, because it was a little bit commercial, like the garage? And I think some of the, some of the basement windows don't have siding. They have like, you know, concrete around the windows, et cetera, but at some point in your redoing the whole second floor, are you redoing the whole look of the house, like the siding and everything?
As shown in the images, yes.
Okay, unfortunately, I don't have the images, but you, you are going to like redo it and make it all look renovated outside compared to inside also, correct?
Yes.
Okay, why is the choice not to do anything with the cement driveway, not driveway, garage that looks commercial? I mean, i- is there anything you can do to that to make it not look like the commercial car wash that it was, and maybe put some siding on that or something?
Well, the, the application at this time is, is for the house and for the variance involved with the house, so it's
Mr. Severino, can I interrupt you for a second?
By all means.
And Mr. Magnoli, our, our board's attorney has lost his connection. And he's trying to get back, and before we proceed, I would like to have Jack reestablish his connection.
Okay, so we'll wait, right?
We will.
Do I remain screen sharing or stop?
Just, just hold off, Mr. Severino.
Don't worry.
Okay, thanks, Jack. He, he's managed to come back on.
I'm sorry, Mr. Serpico, we're getting some feedback, so I'm not sure.
I turned off my phone.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, please proceed, Mr. Magnoli, with your questions for Mr. Severino.
Okay, are you back, Mr. Serpico?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So so the, the garage, if you, if in the future, in this application, everything that you plan to do is with the house and the property and not with the garage, correct?
At this time, the application is for the renovation of the house.
Okay. And I think as an architect, does that mean if what you're doing with the house is approved, that, that you can do something architecturally with the garage later, or you'd have to apply?
That's, that's kind of a weird question. It's, it's not a good question. Yes, they, they can come back and reapply to do something, or they may not. Depends on what they're doing. That, that's, it's, it's a very wide-open question, Ernest.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so all I was trying, Mr. Architect, if you're painting it and cleaning it up, that's one thing. But if in the future, I think, wouldn't you need to apply if you said, well, we want to make it a, I don't know, a little home in the back with, you know? Yeah, okay, all right, so we're clear on that. Now, the other thing, I, I'm, I'm looking, you said the, you're going to put in central air, I guess, with cooling units?
I would, I would hope so, yes.
Okay, so architecturally, of course, you know, the, the unit for the Okay, so architecturally, uh, of course, you know, the, the, the unit for the air goes in a closet somewhere in the house, but the, the, the cooling part either goes on the ground, or up on the roof, or in the basement. I, I don't, I don't even know if it can go in the basement. I don't think they can. But I think it has to go on the ground, or, or, or on the, on the roof.
Well, what's the question?
The question is, where you, when it, where are you planning to put the cooling unit of the central air?
Uh, we have an outside, uh, location shown on the site plan for that.
Okay, and it, okay, and will, will that be, um, semi-soundproof, so it won't disturb the neighbors?
I would assume it's going to be, uh, you know, standard.
Okay, all right, uh, so now I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the, uh, are, are you, are you gonna change the front stairs, those cement stairs too? Is that all changing?
Yes, those will be, uh, redone, yes.
Okay, so again, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at the pictures, but basically what you're saying is you're basically redoing this whole house with the same footprint and a second floor, and you're trying to make it modern, or whatever, or fit in with the neighborhood, but be basically a reconstructed, uh, as new house, correct?
It will be, it will be completely renovated.
Okay, uh, and, uh, will, will the basement windows stay the same? I think it's, I'm looking on the west, on the east side, there's one, two, three, four, five of them. Will all that configuration stay the same?
There is no plan at this time to remove the basement windows.
Okay, and the, the house to the west, and I think you brought it up, and what I'm asking is, I guess, y- you know it's code that the, the west side of the house that you're doing, and the east side of the house next to it, uh, on, on the west side of it, uh, both can have windows, correct?
Uh, we do not show any windows on that elevation.
On yours?
On ours.
And, and I'm, and I'm looking at the picture of the neighbors. I don't think there's any windows on their elevation, on, on their east wall, and I wonder if that's all because everybody was trying to do what the code says, you know, no windows when you're, I guess what?
That's a speculation.
All right, so, are, in other words, the window thing, is it because you're, what do you, what, how many feet away from the western house and your, the house that you're doing, uh, are the walls actually, are they five feet, three feet, two feet, one foot? What are they?
I don't have a dimension to the adjacent house. I just have the, uh, dimension to the property line.
Okay.
And, and that, that, that's all we have.
Okay, so, so architecturally, uh, I think you're aware that there's a, a probably a, a one, two, three, four, five-foot space between the two houses, correct?
You say so, yes.
I mean, I think, I?
No, no, he can't say so. You have to eat, if you say, just say you don't know. You already answered this.
I, I don't know. I do not have that dimension.
If you don't know the answer, don't speculate.
Okay, did, did you testify that the reason on the west wall of what you're planning, if it's approved, that you're not gonna have windows because it's too close to the, to the home, to the west? I, I thought I heard you say that.
Yes.
Okay, so then, and I thought I heard you say the reason was because the two houses are so close together.
I spoke to the proximity to the property line.
Okay, well, okay, and of course, that's why on the east side, you could probably do whatever you want, because, you know, there's so far between your east wall and the west wall of the house on the other side. Okay, that, it, it doesn't matter, right? It doesn't matter if you have the distance, correct? You can put as many windows as you want, probably. Isn't that correct? Like on the east side?
There is, there is no limitation by code to having windows on that elevation.
Okay, all right, uh, so now I wanted to ask you about the curb and, and the driveway, and you're talking about keeping, uh, removing some of it, or whatever. Well, it's a double driveway, commercial, with a double curb cut. Are you planning to change the curb cut back to one? Or are you keeping it as wide as it is at the street? And as much cement at the street, because it's, it's a double?
Wait, don't say what? Don't say cause. Well, answer the question.
To me?
Yeah, the question was, is there any plan to take away any of the curb cut and make it smaller?
There is no plan to do anything past the property line of the house.
Okay.
Is there any plan to change the two concrete-adjoint driveways that look like about twenty feet wide?
There's no plan to do anything past the property line of the house.
Okay, but, but I thought you testified that you were removing some of the cement to put? Did you testify that you're removing some of the concrete driveway to put permeable stone and maybe a patio?
Testify that you were gonna increase the pervious area on the east side of the house and take away some of the driveway, correct?
Correct.
So then the answer to his question is that you are gonna reduce the width of that driveway along the side of the house, correct?
Along the side of the house within the property.
Yes, but that's, that was his question. That, that was his direct question. He wanted to know if you're gonna make that drive, that drive back narrower, and the answer is yes. Okay, all right, go ahead, Mr. Magnoli.
Uh, uh, okay, so at, at what point from the sidewalk will you remove one of the cement driveways? Uh, it seems like to me, are you saying that from the sidewalk, you're gonna keep the double curb cut, you're gonna keep the two cement driveways that are joined, and then once you get towards the back of the house, you're gonna take out a lot of cement in one of the driveways and replace it with permeable, where you're gonna have a deck and a patio and all kinds of stuff? Is that correct?
No. A, along, uh, along the eastern side of the property, whatever is the defined line of, of the current driveway and, and separation between driveway and, and whatever the neighbor has, remains. As you go towards the house, on the house side, it's going to go from the property line and get narrower from the current width, and, and narrow back to a point where it is approximately fourteen point six nine feet wide, as opposed to what it is currently. Um, and it'll remain that, that, actually, that line where, where it reaches at fourteen point six nine, that straight line that's parallel to the house, will go back towards the rear parallel. So it's going to take out, um, I don't have the specific dimension that it, that it's going to remove, but it will widen that, that planter area to a point where the driveway is only fourteen point six nine wide at that, uh, property line in the front. Now, on the western side, the driveway had tapered towards the garage anyway. So the exact dimension of that width of driveway does change as you go towards the rear and gets narrower, uh, as you go towards the rear. But the parallel line of the planting strip along the house will be, will be wider to that point.
Okay, so again, I'm, I'm looking at the picture, and, and I see the two double driveways joined, and the doors to the garage, it seems like they're gonna need those two driveways to be intact, but what you're saying is to the west of the western door of the garage is where you're gonna start to take out the cement? Because otherwise?
Uh, I, I mean, a picture's worth a thousand words and, and unfortunately?
Well, I'm looking right at it. I mean, it's like I can almost open the door with my hand here.
You see, you see T1? Are you on the T1 sheet?
N- no, no, I'm on, uh, Google Earth.
Oh, that's, that's not what we're looking at then. Uh, the proposal would have, would have the, the proposal would have the asphalt as wide as it is at the garage doors, and it would taper back to what we're discussing, um, as it goes towards the back of the house.
So the two driveways coming from the curb are gonna remain enough so that a car can go to the leftern side, for the left door on the garage, or stay on the right driveway and go right into the right garage door, correct?
I don't know if I could, uh, I'm not even following the question. I apologize.
Okay, from the curb, you got a double cut and two joint concrete driveways. Right in the back, you have a double car garage that was used as a car wash with commercial doors, whatever, that's, but now it's gonna be private. So my point is, when a car comes in from the people who bought it for residential use, for whatever reason, if they wanna park in one of those garages, they need that, those concrete driveways to stay where they are, because how are they gonna pull in the driveway? Over the stone, or was that how you have it planned?
No, it's not. We have, we have enough, we have enough, sir, sir, we have enough asphalt in the back, enough paving, I'm sorry, enough concrete in the back, so that the cars can get to either garage door.
Okay, all right, so then, since I can't go to the back of the house, a lot of the cement that you're talking about removing is probably in the backyard, which is to the west of the western door. In other, that, is that whole back area concrete behind, directly behind the house?
Currently, the area, currently, the area between the existing home and the garage is, is paved. It's hardscape.
Okay, and behind the house, and from behind the house, to the left of, looking at it, to the left of the left door, which is no longer the garage, that's an open area, is it also concrete back there too? And is that what you're saying? You're gonna take out, put a deck in, and put some stone and make a patio? Is that what you're talking about?
No, the, the deck will be directly behind the home.
That, that's exactly correct. Okay, so, so I think what I'm asking is, when this is all finished, walking by, you're gonna look at the double driveway, to the double doors, and it's gonna look the way it does now. What's gonna look very different is the back deck, the concrete that you take out, the patio that you put in, correct?
No, uh, there will be a, a larger planter area right along the, uh, western side of the house. I'm sorry, eastern side of the house, eastern side of the house.
Okay, so?
There'll be a larger planar, planar and landscaping area along that side. So the, the visual appeal of the house on that side would be much better than current.
I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure it will. And, and so then it's safe to say that your testimony is that when you're walking by, if your project's all done, these two concrete joint driveways will almost look the same, except in the area where you can't see to the west of the, of the western door of the garage, the whole backyard.
I, I can't testify to that. I, I can't say.
Let's, let, timeout here, timeout. We're, we're going in circles. Timeout. You testify?
All I wanna know is if the two driveways are gonna look the same after the renovation?
They're not. It's gonna narrow down to fourteen feet along the side of the house, 'cause he's increasing the pervious area. He's already said that two or three times. The, the only place, the only place it's gonna look the same is in the rear, once you get back by the garages, so that you can get a car in the dri, in the garage on the left, and a car in the dr, a garage on the right. But the access drive going back is going to be narrowed down to fourteen feet and some inches. Isn't that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. So the, uh, curb cut will stay the same, correct?
We've gone through this before.
Yeah, if you've already, you've already answered that question, don't answer it again.
Okay, all right. Oh, on the, on the eastern side of the property, next to the driveway, are you planning any fences, I mean, or anything like that?
On the eastern side, um, no.
No.
Nothing, nothing along the driveway, nothing along the driveway.
On the eastern side of the driveway, and, and I guess you know that the house next to it has its own driveway on the east, so, so that this is all your space, all your owner's space, and your plan for the, for the driveway on the right of the property, on the far east of the property, which, I don't know, I guess that's the neighbor's landscaping. So you, your property line is where your driveway is, correct?
That is, that is incorrect.
So who, who owns all that grass and all that, all that shrubbery and trees uh, uh, next to the eastern side of your driveway?
Not relevant.
Is that part of your property?
Sir, how do I answer that?
If you don't know, you don't know.
I don't, I don't know who owns the shrubbery. I don't know who owns the shrubs. I, I, I don't know what side of the line they're on.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking at the eastern side of the driveway.
I know.
At the house, at the house next door, there's a lawn with a lot of shrubbery, and it's right at the edge of your eastern driveway, and I'm wondering, is that the neighbor's property or your property?
He, he can't answer the question. He doesn't know.
Okay, okay, he can't answer. And I think, uh, in order to do this construction, there's a big, 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 uh, tree right in the front of the house with a lot of spread-out, uh, limbs. You don't have to remove that tree, do you, for construction?
I do not believe that it would need to be removed.
Okay, and I think there's, uh, some trees in the back too, right? You don't have to remove any of those?
I don't know.
Okay. And I think, looking at it, I think, and, uh, the second floor is gonna tie into those drains on the top of the first floor now?
Um, considering the scope of work, the, the drainage would have to be, uh, redone from the new roof line to the, to the grade.
Okay, so, so even with the new second floor, with all the square footage, you're gonna be removing that water from the property through an effective drain system, and where's it gonna drain? Out to the street? Or do you have a, on property?
Preferably, we're, we're looking for it to be in the planter area.
Okay, 'cause I'm just wondering, like, maybe there's something there that the car wash used to get rid of all their water. Maybe you could use that?
You're testifying.
Okay. Uh, do you know if the, uh, garage has a, a water removal system from what its previous use?
I do not know.
Okay, all right, I think that's it. And, uh, are, are we gonna comment tonight, uh, Mr. Serpico?
Yeah.
We are? And is there, is there, is there an engineer testifying also?
Uh, you'd have to ask Mr. Tropoli.
Mr. Serpico, no. My witness, my next witness would be Mr. Higgins.
Okay.
No engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Magnoli. I don't show any other hands raised, Mr. Avaloni. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tropoli. Uh, please call your next witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, our third and final witness will be Mr. Jim Higgins, who's our professional planner.
Good evening.
Good evening. James, raise your right hand. I swear testimony about giving this matter with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name, spell it, and give us, uh, a, a very quick rundown of what you do, considering the fact that you used to be the board, uh, planner many years ago. I assume you're still a planner?
I am still a licensed planner. My name is James Higgins, H.I.G.G.I.N.S. I, uh, have been a licensed planner in the state for over forty years. I have, my license is, is current, and I have testified before, before this board on a number of occasions as an expert, and at one time represented this board as their consulting planner. I've also testified before hundreds of boards throughout the state.
We accept your credentials. Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Jim, can you, um, briefly describe, uh, your methodology in preparing your testimony this evening?
Uh, surely, I look at the application, I looked at the site, I reviewed the plans, I reviewed the expert reports, uh, and determine which variances I felt were necessary. I look at the ordinance, I determine which variances that I feel are necessary for the application, and then came up with conclusions as to whether I thought there was justifications for the granting of the variances and what those justifications were.
And can we, could we start off, Jim, if you would, with just a basic site description in terms of the surrounding properties, the general style of the properties, and whether or not the, the current home fits in within the streetscape as, uh, you observed, if you would?
Yeah, surely. Uh, the site is a seventy-five-hundred-square-foot parcel. It's located in the R1 zone. It's currently occupied by one-and-a-half-story, single-family residence. Uh, the character of the residences in this area are such that they're nearly all two, two-story, two-and-a-half-story structures. They have, the walls on either side of the structures are straight up. There's nothing where a wall is offset at all, um, and they all have front porches. Uh, the existing residence is completely out of character with, with what's in this area. Uh, what's being proposed is substantially in character with what's in the area, much more in character than what currently exists on, on the site at this time. Uh, there are two variances that are necessary, as I see it. One of them is by extending the western, uh, facade upwards. Uh, the facade is set back one-point-eight feet from the western property line. The intent is to extend that vertically, uh, to create a second story where there's currently one-and-a-half stories. So basically, while the, the second story, or the half-story is being completely removed, and the second story is being constructed, when you look at the before and after, it's looking as if you're, you're creating another, you're, you're increasing the size of the building by a half-story. It's going from a half-stories to two stories.
So with, with respect to, um, the, the C and, the, uh, C variance analysis, before you get into that, you've had an opportunity to look at the board planner's memo dated, I believe it was, on May sixth, twenty-twenty-one. you've had an opportunity to look at the board planner's memo dated, I believe it was on May sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Yes, I have.
There's several comments in there, Jim, that I'd like to just refer you to, if I may. Um, again, would you say that it that reconciling this application to the master plan would be a goal of zoning?
Would be a what?
A goal of zoning?
That's a goal of zoning, yes. I think in this case, when you look at the purposes of the master plan, the goals of the master plan, it would be appropriate to look at some of those goals and determine whether or not this is consistent with those goals.
And with regard to page three of eight, if you have the planner's memo there.
Right here in front of me.
Thank you, Jim. On three point one, community design regulations, would it be your opinion that the proposed renovation would fit within the spirit of the community design regulations?
Very clearly. I think it brings this this structure much more into uh, compliance with the character of the area and helps preserve and protect the character of this residential neighborhood. The fact that this was previously a commercial enterprise with apparently a residence associated with it was completely out of character. What's being proposed now is to eliminate any commercial use of the property in terms of the car wash and to utilize the garage as basically as a residential garage and to reconstruct the house so that the house, the character of the house, its design, its height, and everything about that house really falls more into character with with the character of the existing neighborhood. So you would have, right now, you have an anomaly with the with the existing building and the existing site. What's being proposed here is something much more in character with the neighborhood, and also by reducing the amount of pervious, impervious uh, surface on the site and creating more pervious surfaces, including increasing the the outdoor garden area. I think really brings this site more into a residential character than previously exists, than currently exists, really.
There has been some conversation regarding the proposed front facade combination shed-in gable. Do you, from a planning perspective, would you find that that style of roof fits within the context of the neighborhood and meets the spirit of the community design regulations?
Yes, I don't think it's inconsistent. It is different than so many of the other front, many of the other porches uh, in in the neighborhood. But at the same time, when you look at it, it seems to blend in, and sometimes a little bit of variation is a good idea. It's the eliminates monotony, and it creates a little bit of visual interest. It's clear, in my opinion, in character with with the the character of the neighborhood.
And Jim, just directing your attention again, some discussion this evening about a fence. Uh, and I realize in zoning, we that the board can't give a approval on a fence or a structure on someone else's property. But would you say from a zoning perspective that a fence of some sort, whether it be four or six, assuming that an agreement could be worked out with the neighbor would be appropriate in that particular alleyway to the west of the subject dwelling?
Yes, I think a four-foot fence would would be very appropriate, and I think maybe Donna can clarify, but from everything I'm hearing, and I haven't looked into this specific aspect of the application, but from what I'm hearing, if it was a four-foot fence, it wouldn't even require board approval because it would conform. It would simply have to have the two property owners go get a fence construction permit and put the fence up. It's a four-foot, solid four-foot fence in the front yard. And I may be wrong there. That's that's why I think maybe Donna might be better off commenting on that that aspect of it. But I do agree that I haven't heard anything that says a six-foot fence is be better than the four-foot fence.
And Jim, if I may, at this point in time, I don't believe there was anything else in the planner's memo that I found to be necessary for you to comment on, with the exception of the obvious, which would be the presentations of proofs required for the required C variances. So Jim, again, if you would just in a narrative fashion, move forward with the appropriate variance analysis, please.
Sure. There are two variances necessary, in my opinion. One of them is for the extending the existing non-conforming uh, east-western facade of the building, which is set back one point eight feet, and continuing that up so that you would have a two-second story, a full second story on that side of the building at one point eight feet from the property line. That would be the first variance. The second variance is that I and I would I would look at the second variance as more of a technical variance than anything else. In terms of building coverage, the building coverage is being increased from, I believe it's twenty-three point six percent, yeah, twenty-three point six percent to twenty-eight point one two percent. The ordinance permits twenty-five percent. But it appears for me, and looking at the plans and from all the testimony, that all of that increase is the goes towards the deck. So that while it is building coverage, it's not something that would affect light air and open space, and I don't think it's a substantial negative impact in that regard. But to to discuss the C variances, there are two reasons that the municipal land use law allows an applicant to seek positive reasons for a C variance. The first of that would be the C one or hardship variance, where there's something that's specific to the nature of the site that would create the need for that this hardship would create the need for that that variance. The second would be the C two criteria, which is generally that the benefits, the planning benefits of granting the variance substantially outweigh the detriments. And in either case, with the C one, you also have to examine whether there are any detriments. In my opinion, there are elements of both types of variance, both types of proofs that are appropriate to this application. With regard to the side yard setback, first of all, there's no way to reasonably move the existing building to so that it would comply with the ordinance requirement, and the ordinance requirement is where you have if it was, there was no building here, it's a new structure, the requirement would be six feet. And where you have an existing non-conforming setback that's less than six feet, the ordinance would permit you to have at least a three-foot, require at least a three-foot setback. In this case, there's no way to move the existing facade of the building. Uh, so that I think there is a hardship in that regard. In addition, when you look at the character of the area, every building, every residential building in this area, the side, the first and second stories align perfectly. And so what this would be doing by extending that existing facade of the building vertically would make this building be consistent in character with all of the other buildings in the area. So I think that's a substantial benefit. It helps maintain the character. In fact, I think it promotes the character of the of the area. So I think when you look at this, and I also look at the fact that what is there on that side of the building right now, you have one and a half stories. Now, while that half story is going to be removed, visibly right now, you have approximately, and I don't know the exact figure, but anywhere from fourteen to sixteen feet of vertical wall that's one point eight feet from the property line. Part of that's going to be removed and then replaced again. What you'll have is a vertical wall that is probably in the neighborhood of eighteen feet high, maybe nineteen feet high. So it'll extend maybe four or five feet higher than what exists currently. So visually, I don't think there's going to be a substantial negative impact. If anything, I think it's going to be a positive impact because it brings the the building and the site much more into conformity with the character of the area. With regard to negative impact, again, I don't see any substantial negative impact because you're not you're not taking a single-family house and creating an entire second story. You're taking a one and a half story house, and you're creating a second story there. So visually, I don't think there's going to be a negative impact. I think functionally and aesthetically, I think it's going to be a substantial improvement. Uh, with regard to the lot coverage, again, that that deals with primarily with the deck. And when you look at what's being proposed here, and that's eliminating a substantial amount of impervious uh, coverage, particularly under the deck, and allowing rainwater to go through the deck and to permeate into the ground, I think that's a substantial benefit. Uh, in addition, when you look at the goals of the master plan, and I think these are also in the planner's report, one of them is to protect and enhance the quality and enjoyment of the city's residential neighborhoods through policy and regulation that promotes quality of life and minimizes negative impacts from the city's tourism and other economic development activities. Another goal is to maintain and enhance the character of single-family neighborhoods with regulations that support and reinforce these uses. And again, by allowing a deck which is very attractive deck, and it's not a deck that's and it's not something that's going to extend that very high, so it's not going to have a visual impact on on the surrounding properties or on light air and open space. It will have absolutely no negative impact on the impacts of the city's tourism or other economic development activities, but it will promote the quality of life for the occupants of this this residence, allowing them to better enjoy their rear yard. Uh, and I do know there was a question earlier by one of the board members whether ten feet was adequate for the width of the deck, and the architect answered that adequately. But just to supplement that testimony, during the course of the hearing, I walked out my back door on my deck, which is about fourteen feet wide. I measured ten feet and looked at my five-foot-wide octagonal table that's sitting on the deck and realized that there's plenty of room for that table and for for somebody to walk past the table, and so the ten-foot-wide deck is more than adequate for for a a deck and for a for a usable and enjoyable deck, in my opinion. And when I look at other and looking at Google Maps, there's appears to be other properties in this immediate neighborhood that have decks or other features in the rear yards that allow the residents to utilize those rear yards and enjoy them. And I think that's really what the purpose of this deck is. And there is no substantial negative impact. Again, if anything, I think by removing that impervious material and allowing water to run through the deck and into the ground, I think there's a substantial improvement. So when I look at the variances that are being requested, I think they're minimal in nature. There's only two of them. And when you look at the benefits of the granting of this application and the fact that the building gets to be substantially more in character with the neighborhood, helps to promote the character of the neighborhood. I think that the benefits substantially outweigh any detriments, and actually, because you had to also have the hardship involving the existing location of the building. Again, I think that's another positive reason. So I think the positives are substantial, and I don't think the negatives are are substantial at all. So I think the variances can be granted.
Thank you, Jim. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Tropoli. Thank you, Mr. Higgins. I have no questions for Mr. Higgins. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Mr. Higgins? Okay. So, uh, again, we'll have to ask the board professionals if they have any questions. We'll start with you, Donna, since you raised your hand like a good student.
Thank you, Donna Miller. Um, so I just wanted to clarify one thing about Mr. Higgins' testimony. Um, and I don't think it's really influencing any of the members, because we, I think we've dealt with this in the past, but the the reference to the reduction of a required setback only applies to non-conforming lots, not non-conforming structures.
Okay, I misread your report, then. Okay.
And and, um, so the the lot in question is a conforming size and configured lot, so it wouldn't apply. But I I believe what he has said is is correct, that, um, you know, the the hardship is essentially having to move the entire structure in order to comply. You know, there's no additional land to buy. There's nothing you can do except move the entire house in order to comply. Um, and that the, um, you know, the change from the half story to the full story with the with the new roof is probably not a substantial increase. And that, again, the the conforming building height is also helpful in that regard in satisfying that that criteria. The other the other thing about the deck, again, he made a valid point on the trade-off. Right now, we don't have an impervious coverage standard in the ordinance. We're going to. We we have building coverage, and so they are making a trade-off and taking some impervious surface out and with insights, assistance, and direction. You know, hopefully, we're going to get a benefit for stormwater runoff by the removal of that impervious and getting hopefully some some recharge and not just sheet flow or, you know, stormwater runoff off the site. So that's the one thing to consider. And again, when we change the ordinance, which, oh, uh, what's today? Was that last Wednesday? I think they were on for first reading, so hopefully very soon we're going to have our new standards and building coverage is going to increase to thirty percent. Uh, and that is offset by having an impervious coverage standard. So I think as a whole, those two deviations are kind of in line with what is coming, you know, down the pike as far as regulatory for for us.
I'm aware of that, Donna, and we appreciate that.
But Chris, do you happen to know, was it on for first reading last week? Was that the last meeting?
I believe it was, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I believe it was.
Excellent.
Okay, um, thank you, Donna. Doug, do you want to have any questions for Mr. Higgins? No? Okay. So then at this time, we will open it up to the public. Irina, do we have anybody in the public for Mr. Higgins?
I show one hand, Mr. McNally. Go ahead and speak or ask your question of Mr. Higgins. I'm sorry.
Yeah, this McNally, seventeen northeast seven screen point beach, eight thirteen. Uh, First Avenue, Asbury and Cedar Avenue, West Longbridge. So I had a question. Front yards. When the second floor is complete on this building, will the roof line look like the two neighboring houses? I mean, will it be a slope roof? It'll it'll kind of aesthetically. It's not going to have a flat roof, is it? With a deck on the roof or anything?
No, it's going to be. That's probably more appropriate for the architect to answer.
Yeah, that's that's beyond the scope of his testimony. That's architectural.
Okay, so from a planning point of view, uh, I think you mentioned that the deck in the back would would need would increase to over the limit, the 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 building footprint. But I think you, did you testify that you're aware that with the new standard that the twenty-eight percent that you'll have will probably be changed to thirty percent as the as this was just testified? Were you aware what they meant by that?
I am aware of what Ms. Miller said, that there is an ordinance that apparently has been introduced or or will be introduced very soon that would increase the building coverage to thirty percent, what's permitted, which means the twenty-eight point three percent that's being requested would be under that. So quite frankly, assuming that ordinance is going to be approved, the applicant could withdraw their request for the deck tonight. And when that ordinance is approved, go in and submit for a building permit and not require a variance.
That was my next question. So why, what I'm wondering is, you know, why they're making you ask for a variance when, you know, it's okay, it's irrelevant. Okay, so let's move on. Let's move on. Let's move on. So now, uh, the the variance, uh, I think that you need is the is the one point eight foot on the west wall of the new structure. And and I think that's because it's less than three feet from the property line. And 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 I think that's where I'm just asking you, I I think you're you're aware that you're in flux with the city and your application about all this. And I just, I just want to know, are you are you aware that what you're asking for may may not have to ask for?
What was the question?
Yeah, I couldn't hear the question. I don't understand it.
Is he still there?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Mr. McNally, can you repeat your question, please?
Uh, in other words, I don't know if you're looking for an approval tonight because it said some kind of formal activity could happen, but I'm asking the planner. It is he aware that, I think if you came back at another meeting, you wouldn't have to ask for a variance. Are you aware of that?
Irrelevant, Mr. McNally.
Why is it irrelevant? Okay, so you're going to vote tonight on something that, okay, it's irrelevant. Okay, so again, for the planner, when the when the second floor is put on, and I'm looking right at the picture of this house and the two neighboring, and actually four, six houses in a row, you're going to say it's going to look almost the same, like with a slope roof above the second floor and the porch is going to remain open? Is that true in the front?
That's my understanding from looking at the plans and from listening to your
Okay, okay, so then would you agree that you're enhancing the area in terms of keeping it in line with the neighbors?
Yes, that was my testimony.
Okay, and okay, so you are aware and and I, okay. And the fence, I I know, again, as a planner, are you aware that in the city, a four foot open fence in the front property, not on, well, I think even on a corner in Asbury. But you keep talking about the planning and the placement of fences. I'm just wondering why you wouldn't ask for a four foot open fence around the whole front yard.
He said that. He he said that he saw no reason why not to put a four foot fence in.
Okay, all right, so you so you testified to that. And and you're aware that 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 meets the code, right?
Yeah.
I
And and
Let him answer. Let him answer. Let him answer.
It's my understanding that it meets the code. I have not I have not looked at that part of the ordinance, so I can't say I'm specifically aware.
That's really not quite true, Mr. Higgins, since this fence crosses onto the property of the neighbor. This fence does not meet those requirements.
I'll address that. I'll make sure that any fence that we approve will take that in consideration.
If we approve a fence.
If we approve it.
Okay, so as as the planner, I think, are are you aware that a solid six foot fence between the properties that you're probably not going to get a variance for that?
Yeah, we already talked about this.
Okay, okay, so we're back to the, okay, the four foot fence. And again, as as a planner, when you're when you're removing the cement in the back and you say it's going to be permeable now, is there a chance as a planner that that permeability, that the house of the property isn't used to that or the neighbor's property? And those, maybe the water needs to be run off or or run off into the into the sewer in the in the in the street or something.
It's an engineering question.
Okay, but there's not going to be an engineer, right?
Well, and the planner can't, he didn't testify.
Okay, okay, all right. So I'm going to ask the planner one other question. You you described you do thousands of things. Is it often that as a planner, you're one of the professional testimonies with an architect and a planner? Isn't there usually an engineer also?
You can't answer that.
That's an irrelevant question, Mr. McNolley.
Okay, all right, all right, relax. Thank you, Mr. Planner.
Thank you, Mr. McNolley.
All right. So from my understanding, Mr. Tropoli, that's all your witnesses, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. We've concluded our presentation. Thank you.
And for the record, Mr. Avaloni, I don't show any other hands raised at this moment in time.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much, Irina. So we will now proceed. At this point, Jack, do we do comments?
Public comment.
Yep. So we'll open it up for public comment. Or should we allow Mr. Tropoli to make his final statement or then public comment?
You have any final statement?
I can make a very brief statement. I believe that we have complied with the city's master plan with the community design standards. I would ask the board to give great weight to Mr. Higgins' testimony. I believe we've satisfied the positive and negative criteria which are required. The proposal, quite frankly, on a gateway street for Asbury Park is substantial. It's aesthetic. It serves a purpose of zoning. And I will submit at this point and ask that the board approve the application.
Thank you, Mr. Tropoli. We appreciate that, and we will take it all into consideration. So now we will open it up for public comment. Irina, please put up a clock for four minutes. Please keep your comments relevant to the application. And you will have four minutes to speak in favor or not in favor of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Avaloni, and I just want to remind the public if they would like to comment on this application, they can press the raise hand button at the bottom of the Zoom screen or dial star nine on their telephone. And at the moment, I show two hands raised. And first, we'll allow Mr. Joseph Crissy to comment. And Mr. Crissy, when I unmute you, please state your name, your address, and then Mr. Serpico will swear you in before we start the clock. Thank you.
Mr. Crissy, okay.
Yes, my name is Joseph Crissy, C R I S C I, 1117 Asbury Avenue, Asbury Park.
Okay, I need you to raise your right hand and tell me that you have done so because I cannot
I'm raising my right hand.
Thank you. You solemnly swear that the testimony that you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and you stated and spelled your name for the record, and I also gave us your address.
Correct.
Okay, start the clock and you're free to speak.
So I
Irina, do you have a clock?
I'm sorry?
Hold on, Irina.
Hold on, Irina has to start the clock.
Okay, there you go.
I live next door to Scott and Nikki. They have, I'm a resident here for 12 plus years in this house. They have improved the property immensely since they've moved here. I feel that their plans are going to improve property values, improve the aesthetic of the street. They're great neighbors. They're extremely friendly to everyone that's been here. They fit into the vibe of Asbury Park, which I feel is important. And I just wanted to make that statement to the board. And that's all I really have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Crissy. Okay. The next person. Irina?
All right, I I just realized I can't unmute myself while the screen is up. I'm sorry. All right, let's try this again. All right, and the next and the only other hand I show raised is Mr. McNolley. Go ahead and and state your name and address. And and wait to be sworn in. Thank you.
Harris McNolley, 710 Northeast 73 Point Beach, a property at 813 Asbury Avenue and Cedar Avenue, West Long Branch. I'll be sworn in. Raise my right hand. It's up.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'd like to I'd like to start off by complimenting the owners. I think what they're planning is in fact something that I consider rare. In other words, you're doing something that's going to benefit yourself and the neighborhood. You're also making it fit in. And obviously, if people are notified 200 feet away and no one's calling in to say anything but good things, it means that you're doing a good thing. So I I'd like to compliment you on that. And and I think that your professionals are rather professional, professional. I'd also like to say about the the process, it's not unusual for these kind of things to be happening in Asbury, especially on Asbury Avenue. And sometimes I wonder, though, the the early going process where the public doesn't seem to have or get or can contact the city to get like early plans or first presentations or things like that. I mean, unless you're very, very connected with the city. You know, for example, like the the attorney for this application is the city defense lawyer. And, you know, a lot of involvement with a lot of lawyers and people and architects and his own applications and his own properties. What?
You're breaking up. I'm sorry. I cannot hear you.
Okay, so so I'm just wondering if in the in the future a little bit more could be paid attention to how the public in this case, we strongly agree with what's proposed. But there are a lot of cases where we strongly disagree. But either way, it seems like we're not able to get what we need. We have to talk on the outside. We have to figure out how do you get through to the planning board, how do you get through to the secretaries, how do you get through to the clerk?
Mr. McNolley, Mr. McNolley, that is not relevant. Please keep your comment relevant to the application.
Mr. Serpico? Mr. Serpico?
Yes.
Is he going to prevent me from my where I'm going?
If you if your if your comments are irrelevant, yes, and then you can move on to your next comment.
Well, what's irrelevant about talking about the professionals?
Nothing.
Do you do you agree with him that I was going?
What's irrelevant is that you're saying there's no, there's a lack of access to documentation, et cetera. That's what you're saying, correct?
On this project?
On this project?
Of course. What do you think I'm talking about?
I don't know. I'm not going to have a dialogue or a discussion with you.
Chairman No, but you waste my you waste my time and you interrupt me.
Move on. Either move on or I'll mute you. Move on. You got a choice.
So I was saying, I don't agree with this application that lawyers and people so intimately involved with the city and government should be allowed to represent.
That is totally incorrect, totally incorrect and irrelevant, and I will respond when you're done. Either you stick to the point, you're you're making an accusation that is unfounded, okay? It's completely unfounded. And you cannot substantiate that, and you're under oath. And if I want to, I can cross examine you for as long as I please, but I'm not going to. When you're done, I'm going to make a comment about what you just said. I suggest, strongly suggest, that you get to the point and talk about the application and don't just don't disparage Mr. Tropoli or anyone else in connection with this application. Because it's totally unfounded. Now move on or you're muted.
Am I muted now?
No, you are not.
I'll tell you, I'm not afraid of you or Mr. Tropoli or or Mr.
Out of order, mute him, and that's the end of that. Now, I want to say something, okay? Irina, are you there?
Yes, sir. He is muted.
The notices that go out by the applicants that are posted in the newspaper, do they or do they not say when the documents are available that any individual can make a phone call to City Hall to arrange to see documents? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The documents are available for public inspection on the city website, on the zoning board's webpage, as well as inspection in person by calling the city and arranging to see the documents.
That is correct, and that is published in the Asbury Park Press for all the public to see, and in this case, in the city other official newspaper, which is The Coaster, as well as the notice that was sent to the property owners with 200 feet. So Mr. Mignoli's accusation that he claims that he could not get access to documentation because somehow or other Mr. Tropoli is involved is totally incorrect.
Mr. Serpico, while this is not germane to my client's problem, and I do apologize to them for the comments by Mr. Mignoli, I do not engage with Mr. Mignoli for a reason. And as you know, this evening, as board counsel, I wanted you to handle it in the fashion that you needed to handle it. I simply don't engage with him if I've said 20 words to him in my entire life for obvious reasons. I just want to let you know, and I want to give the board some comfort that, and if I may, of Mr. Serpico, just elaborate briefly. I am eminently permitted as the city's public defender to appear before any board in the city. I've shared that with your legal counsel. There is an ethics committee, professional ethics opinion right on point. And for the record, I'm going to put it in the record, 102 NJ LJ 89, and that can be for Mr. Mignoli's benefit as well before he starts talking off the top of his head. Again, a slight defense on my end, but I feel it's important for the board to realize that everything here in this quasi judicial setting is being done appropriately, both by board professionals and by this applicant's attorney. Thank you for permitting me to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Tropoli, and go ahead, Jack.
Before this meeting, Mr. Tropoli and I reviewed an ethics opinion, which which clearly says that as a public defender, he has the right to, he's not, he has absolute right to appear before a city agency or board. We already covered that, but that that's not what Mr. Mignoli was saying. Mr. Mignoli was intimating, clearly making a statement that somehow he might have been deprived of seeing documentation simply because of Mr. Tropoli being involved in the case. And that is absolutely, absolutely false. And it's not only false for this application, it's false for everyone because under the rules that we now follow with all of these meetings, especially these remote meetings, there's all kinds of checks and balances about these notices that the city has complied with and so have all the applicants before this board as well as the planning board. So his testimony is totally uncredible and false and inaccurate.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Mr. Tropoli. I appreciate both of what you had to say. And personally, I I found what Mr. McNolley had to say very offensive. So let's let's go back to our application and our applicants. I apologize to both of your applicants. And we will move on from here.
And I apologize for losing my temper, but I had about had enough of those accusations.
Okay, so we're at a point now where I I understand, Irina, there's no more people in the public that would want to make a comment before we move on?
That is correct, sir. There are no other hands raised for public comment.
So at this point now, we're at a point where we can get some opinions from the board. And we can then move on to a vote. So does anybody have any comments on the board for this particular application? Mr. Harris, please proceed. I'm afraid we can't hear you, Dan. A little bit.
Okay, I'm very familiar with the street. And many people on that street have been upgrading their houses and doing them over again. So any upgrade that the applicant would do would be a welcome from the city and from myself. Because any that's that's an impression that people get when they come into Asbury, when they come down Asbury Avenue. So any upgrade with a house is welcome. It's original. I do know when it was a car wash. Matter of fact, I know the guy who owned the car wash. Okay. But welcome to Asbury, and I'm in in support of what you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody, go ahead, Russell.
So I'm 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 going to echo Danny's comments. I live around the corner from you guys. Hi, I'm your I'm your neighbor. I think it's fantastic what you're looking to do to Asbury Avenue. That particular block is one that I've always thought could use people exactly like you moving in and building their dream home. I'm a huge fan of your project, and I can't wait to see it completed.
Anybody else from the board?
Oh, go ahead, Brittany.
You can, sorry.
I was just going to say I I have the same sentiment as Dan and Russell. I like that you're keeping the colonial style, but it's it's modern, yet you're still, you know, from the outside, it still looks like it could have been built 75 years ago. And especially on Asbury Ave. So good luck.
Yeah, I'm going to piggyback off what my other board member said, and I do, you know, agree that the design is it's nice, it works to fit in with the surrounding neighborhood. My only thing I would ask my board members and, you know, if I'm Um, my only thing I would ask my board members, and, you know, if I'm the only one on this, that's fine. Um, I still think that back, um, concrete where the deck ends, I think they, since they're already going to be ripping up the other concrete part, I think that should be turned into grass space, and, you know, the building coverage is over, even though it is going to move towards that eventually, you know, this, we have to go by what the zoning was when the application was submitted and reviewed, and I still, I stand by that, that should be turned into, um, grass space. And I like what Doug suggested about the gravel pit. We've suggested that with other, um, decks underneath, and, you know, obviously angling it and keeping it away from the basement so it won't flood. But those are my only two, um, suggestions if we were to approve it, or conditions, I guess.
Thank you, Brittany. And I also would like to echo all what my board has said. Um, I appreciate that you bought in this part of town on Asbury Avenue, which is surly needed to have some renovation and some people like yourselves moving in to, to develop such a beautiful home. Um, I hesitate about the fence. Um, I, I would say that one of the conditions regarding the fences, you would need the approval uh, of the, uh, adjoining neighbor at least, and that, um, uh, it would be more appropriate to set it back um, and reduce it to a four-foot size, which would be more in line with, uh, an appropriate fence for that area. Um, I also want to agree with Brittany and say that, uh, we should be very attentive to the stormwater management of the site. Uh, the more concrete you remove, the better off your neighbors and yourself are so that it can percolate through the ground rather than lay on the surface of those hard surfaces. Um, but I like your design, and I'm very happy with, uh, the outcome, and I wish you all the best of luck, and I hope you enjoy Asbury Park. So on that, I would like to make a motion to approve the application with those conditions.
I'll second.
Just want to make sure, uh, obviously compliance with the outstanding issues in the report. Uh, the fence, uh, to be set back, uh, to the, I assume the building line versus the front porch line, uh, at a height of four feet, obviously with the consent of the, uh, neighbor, uh, as a condition of approval, which would have to be forthcoming. Drainage under the deck, uh, would be, uh, 12-inch gravel base as per Doug's recommendation. Uh, the front porch railing, I think there was testimony about that as to what, how it's going to be constructed. So I assume we can pull that out of the record. The architect made that. Uh, and Christopher, you're saying you want some of the concrete in the rear removed?
Um, I, I would agree with Brittany. Uh, if we could make more area grass, I, I think that would, um, definitely help the, the problem with the, uh, stormwater management more.
How much of it do you want removed?
I suggest right where the stairs come down. Does that make sense, Chairman?
Um, unmute yourself, please.
What?
I'm sorry, who did you want to unmute, Jack?
Donna, I think she's talking, but she, I can't hear her.
Oh.
Would the, uh, would the applicant, before we take a vote on it, because if we vote yes, let's get the applicant to, you know.
Yeah, can we, can we bring her in on a dialogue? Um, or shall I?
We've got to reopen this thing.
No, I don't want to do that. Let me, uh, I'll tell you what, let me, uh, what I like to do, it's not clear to me at this point, I was under the impression that board member wanted the concrete on the side of the garage removed, and that was what I was hearing, and I may be wrong.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, where the stairs come down in the back?
Well, uh, I'm not, I just want to make sure I understand exactly.
To the west of the garage.
Just looking for my plan, hold on. To the left of the garage. Was that, that was testified, that was testified to as...
For you to come down.
I mean, was it, is it the, the entire pad to the, uh, east side of the garage? Is that what you're referring to? Did I, I beg your pardon, the west side of the garage?
The west side of the garage.
I think we should delineate exactly what needs to be, what, what the proposal is. I mean, I'll, I'll text my client, and, uh, I can't speak to her, but I mean, I don't think that, uh...
Want to take a second and call her on herself?
Uh, if the board would like to just take a, like a two-minute recess, but is, I just want to be sure that that's what we're referring to. We're talking about that entire area from where the deck will be on the side of the west side of the garage. Is that fair to say, Mr. Chair?
I believe so, yes.
Alright, with your permission, may I have a two-minute recess?
Uh, I, I'll make a motion to take a two-minute recess.
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two-minute recess starting now.
Oh, I thought there'd be more light.
Yankees score.
Currently, the Yankees are leading the Rays three to one in the top of the ninth.
Russell?
Yes.
Are we in recess?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I think, Mr. Tropoli, are you ready?
I am.
Okay, so Irina, can you call us back to order?
Yes, sir, thank you. Let me take roll, please. Uh, Dan Harris?
Yeah.
Brittany Ashman?
I'm back.
Thank you. Tim Slick?
Here.
When, um, sorry. Bonnie Knott?
Here.
Russell Lewis?
Here.
And Christopher Avaloni?
Here.
Thank you, everyone is here.
So, Mr. Tropoli, um, you had a discussion with your client?
I did. Uh, we reviewed it. Um, the, um, the answer is, they will agree. Simply put, um, of course, they would like the ability to try to obtain a four-foot fence, but beyond that, that impervious surface from, I, I presume the leading edge of the stairs to, to its terminal point to the back of the property on the side of the garage is what we're talking about, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, it's done.
We appreciate that. Thank you so much, and the board appreciates it, but I'm sure the neighbors would.
Very well with that.
With that, yep, with that, I, I guess, uh, do you have anything else, Jack, you have to cover in the conditions?
Uh, no, I think, I just wanted to make sure I had the points.
The gravel pit, too.
I'm sorry?
The gravel pit underneath the, the deck.
Already had a 12-inch gravel base as per Doug, uh, Doug's recommendation.
No objection, agreed.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, a second? Any further discussion? No, this motion has been made by Mr. Avaloni, and Russell was the second. Any further discussion? Okay, Irina?
Thank you. I will now take vote. I have a motion by Mr. Avaloni, a second by Russell Lewis. Daniel Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Bonnie Knott?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
And Christopher Avaloni?
Emphatically, yes.
Thank you. That is a unanimous approval.
Okay.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board and board professionals. We appreciate your time and, and thank you, uh, for the approval, and wish everyone a happy, uh, rest of your evening.
Thank you, Mr. Tropoli.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you very much, everyone, and I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting now.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Avaloni and a second by Mr. Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Um, our next meeting will be on May 25th, and the link to the next meeting is on the screen now.
Irina, do you, do you know if we have, uh, uh, other than the one application on that particular day?
Um, as of now, there is just one application.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
Good night, all.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.